If you want to go to the meeting.
Commissioner Stady, your board?
Sir, I am here.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm now going to call to order the joint meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners and the Norfolk County Advisory Board Finance Committee, Wednesday, July 28th, 1:00 P. M. I'll read the executive order on remote participation. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Chapter 30A, Section 20, that order was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, by actual legislature, the order was extended until April 1st. I'm going to ask everyone to please stand and join me in saluting the flag. 2022. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the public, which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you. I'm first going to call a roll of the commissioners, then I'm going to call on Elizabeth Childs of Brookline to call a roll on the members of the Advisory Board Finance Committee. Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Stady.
Present.
Commissioner Shea is here. We have a quorum. Um. Mrs. Childs, will you call a roll of the advisory board?
Yes, I'd be happy to. All right. Um, Carl Balduff. Eric Beckerman.
Here.
Paul Connors.
Here.
Amy Frigiletti.
Here.
Joe Reardon.
Here.
And Elizabeth Childs, I'm here. We have a quorum. Mr. Chairman.
Good. Thank you. The first order of business for the joint meeting is a joint discussion on the action and/or action on a letter from the Norfolk County Advisory Board Finance Committee Chair Ridden. It's a recommendation, the letter recommended a hiring freeze in discussions of effect on the related June 2nd vote. I'm going to ask Attorney Peter Summers from the firm of Murphy, Lamery and Murphy, who is with us, Peter, to join us and give us a brief overview. And that is the matter of the reason for the joint meeting. And then we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, all. So at the commissioner's previous meeting, they did consider an open meeting law complaint and vote on a response to that complaint. The complaint related to the joint meeting between these two boards on June 2nd, in which a hiring freeze was discussed and voted on. And for that agenda, the agenda item referenced a letter that prompted that discussion, but it did not necessarily wasn't specific to note that it was regarding a hiring freeze. The commissioners, given that lack of specificity, acknowledged that there may have been some deficiency in the posting. And it was further not totally specific in the agenda that there was a joint meeting, even though both boards had posted. And so the remedial action that was recommended by our office and that the commissioners decided to take was to hold the discussion again to ensure that the public was given adequate notice of a joint meeting to discuss a hiring freeze. And our recommendation, it's a little bit unusual in this circumstance because the hiring freeze already expired. It was only for a month. So I think technically any vote today to ratify or rescind that vote at this point is unnecessary and moot because it would have expired already. But I do think that the I would recommend that the boards have that full discussion of the reasons for the vote. And if someone could also just start off with a description of what occurred at that June 2nd meeting, you know, discussion, vote, what the vote was, and then engage in the full discussion and deliberation that was associated with that vote, that that would effectively cure any violation that occurred on June 2nd. I'm happy to answer any questions while you're discussing, but I wasn't at the meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to the boards.
Okay.
Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a quick point of order, I just want to clarify something.
Yes.
On the agenda, it states that the the action was on a letter from N C A B Finance Committee Chair Ridden. However, if I read the minutes of the June 2nd meeting properly, and I believe Mr. Ridden was very clear that he was not acting as the Finance Committee Chair or a member of the executive, he had stated clearly that he was making the, he sent the letter in as the Milton representative of the N C A B. So I just want to make sure we don't have a point of order for another potential open meeting complaint because the agenda item is not really what it was on June 2nd. I just want, and maybe Mr. Summer, maybe you can weigh in on whether that's really a point of order or not, but I just wanted to make sure we're all clear.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would say that I don't believe it affects this discussion under the open meeting law. I think it's an important point to make for purposes clarifying the capacity in which the letter is sent, but I don't think it would confuse anybody about who was sending the letter or what the contents of the letter were. So I don't think that that is going to slow us down today.
Right. And really, the main reason I even bring it up is because I know on all the agendas, there's always an agenda item that states that there are items that can be discussed that are not, that the chair couldn't anticipate. That, and being that that was a letter sent in by one of the members, that I don't know if that, again, this may be splitting hairs, but I would believe that that discussion would have been allowed under that agenda item on June 2nd anyway. Is that stretching it?
I will, Mr. Chair, again through you. So I think that that's a separate question. Whether or not there was a violation, discussion today should remediate that. So, you know, we don't even have to get back to that, you know, whether or not it would have covered it.
All right. Thank you.
Um, I wonder if we should revisit the report from the minutes of June 2nd, and I wonder if that would be the way, Mr. Summers, to explain the history of that vote? Would that be, that's what you said we should do first, correct?
In my opinion, that would be, that would be.
Okay. Would people like me to just read the paragraph that had to do with what happened at that meeting? Would that be the best way to start?
Yes.
All right. All right. Let me start with that. This is, this is in the minutes of June 2nd. Mr. Reardon discussed his letter. Mr. Reardon stated his concern is if the county hires someone and then that position is merged with another position based on the Abraham's Group report. Mr. Beckerman stated he agrees with Mr. Ridden's position on new hires, but believes funded positions in the budget should be filled. Mr. Connors asked when the Abraham's Group report will be ready. Ms. Labadini stated the report is expected in July. Dr. Childs stated she agrees with a hiring freeze. She stated backfilling any nonessential positions deserves a critical reexamination. Commissioner Collins stated his motion would be that the county commissioners initiate a hiring freeze excluding seasonal positions until after July 1. Mr. Balduff stated he supports Mr. Ridden's letter. A motion was made by Mr. Connors, seconded by Mr. Beckerman, and voted to support the letter of Mr. Reardon regarding a hiring freeze and pandemic pay and to recommend the support of the county commissioners. On the roll call, Mr. Balduff voted yes, Mr. Beckerman voted yes, Dr. Childs voted yes, Mr. Connors voted yes, Mr. Reardon voted yes. That was, that was the summary of the discussion.
Okay, I think I want to recognize Mr. Ridden if he wants to say anything at all. Chairman Ridden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, the intent of this originally was just to let my colleagues know that I had written a letter, that the letter was intended to be solely for me, being respectful of my colleagues on the Finance Committee. My take on the movement towards filling positions was one where the Abraham's Report should be something to be followed rather than waiting to reassess jobs that have already been filled and having to move people around or possibly lay off people or just getting into a mess around all of that. So the intent originally was only to let the members know. However, organically, it rose to a recommendation. I did not foresee that. I was just letting them know. And, you know, in a nutshell, that's how it went. There was no intention to do that. There was no intention to not let people know anything. It happened organically, though, you know. It's, the allegation was that it was intentional, and it certainly was not.
Okay. Any other members of the Finance Committee want to say anything on this matter?
I would like to just point out that I, is it true what Mr. Sumner says that the, that the hiring freeze is no longer in place because we still have not received the full Abraham's Report? So I just wanted to clarify that point.
I'm going to call on Director Ridden with a point about that. Elizabeth, go ahead.
Want to call me?
Yes. Director Cronin.
Gave Joe Ridden a demotion.
I'm sorry.
I just got a new job.
I just, I just demoted you from chairman to director.
Can I have John's pay for today?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Briefly to your point, Dr. Childs, the Abraham's Report is pending. We're expecting a draft report to be delivered to the commissioners to each one today. During the month of June, as I understand it, it was the commissioners' intent to align the impending reports delivery to this commission with the interest to hold hires until they can digest the meaningful impact that could be forthcoming. The period of time ending July, June 30th, which is effectively fiscal year 21, came and went. With the Abraham's Report now targeted for early to mid-August, the commissioners have decided to impart a sort of hiring control mechanism on positions related to facility maintenance and information technology. Those are two targeted areas that were expressly mentioned in the Abraham scope that could potentially be part of consolidation measures. So to protect the county's long-term interests, they have decided to move certain positions into temporary permanent status, that is, to allow the vacancies to be filled with a certain end date of June 30th, 2022, at which time this commission will have had adequate opportunity to digest all of the factors and the impact of all of the decisions potentially for the F Y 23 cycle. So in short, Doctor, I don't see any hiring freeze per se. I believe the manner in which the commissioners are exercising their authority to control hires yet allow the functions to continue gives both, both the flexibility of the commissioners to assess the long-term impact, but have the job fulfilled so that services are delivered.
Thank you, John. That's really helpful.
Okay. Commissioner Collins.
I just want to add a little bit. So, Dr. Childs, when I made the motion, there was some internal discussion with the commissioners, but when I made the motion, I put the hiring freeze in through the end of the fiscal year and the hope was to have the Abraham's Group report, you know, quickly into July, and that didn't happen. And, and because the motion was only through the fiscal year 21, it technically officially ended as of the end of June 2021. So we're not technically in a hiring freeze, but we have made other measures to try to control which positions are taken care of.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I think that's really helpful, and it just really speaks to the value of the content of Mr. Reardon's letter.
Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yeah.
Just a point of clarification. So we're trying to, you know, be correct here. As Eric Beckerman started off, we want to make sure we're doing the right thing, and there's no questions. Just clarify for me, through you to Dr. Childs, was the minutes that she read, was that the part of the joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the county commissioners? At the time when Chairman Ridden had said, I'm only speaking, you know, on my own. I'm just saying as a suggestion. My memory was that that letter and that action came subsequent, like a week later. I could be wrong, and I stand corrected. But I thought, I remember getting the letter from Joe. He said, I'm speaking for myself, clearly. He made it clear. There was some discussion, but I don't know if there was a FinCom vote to back his suggestion at the meeting we're talking about, or if it happened a week later. Could you just check that? Because I want to make sure if we have, we have to get the dates straight, just to make sure for the record, we're all on solid ground. That's all. I remember Peter, you suggested the hiring freeze. I remember that. But did we have the vote of the FinCom at the same meeting, or was it a week later? Could someone help me with that?
Well, I, I could, Commissioner, I'm reading directly from the minutes of the meeting of the Finance Committee on Wednesday, June 2nd. So that was, and I think we did vote there.
Okay.
The following meeting we had was June 9th, and that was a very brief meeting that we had at the Wallaston Golf Club.
Great. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. So that clears that up. All right. So, okay, I'm fine. So those actions were all done on the same day at the same time. And, Mr. Chairman, we have to vote some kind of, this council had said for us to do a legal vote to annul the action? Is that all we have to do, avoid it in some way? I'll go back to Chairman, Council Summers.
Peter, counselor, can you answer that question? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So in a typical circumstance, yes, that would be appropriate because you would want to ensure that going forward, the, the action remains in place or is put into place properly so that it ends in effect. But because this is moot, I think the vote would be moot as well. It's not going to change what happened in June. No action you take today, I think, will change, you know, the action of who was or was not hired in June. Just in this very unique circumstance, I don't believe, given that, that you need to annul and then take a new vote on the hiring freeze. Although, you know, in a different circumstance, you may, but just not for this.
So I needed that, to do that, Counselor, right? That's not needed. Okay. Okay. I thought we were told we were supposed to do that. All right. So our purpose of our discussion today, I guess, Mr. Chairman, then, is to just amplify and solidify our position that we have a, I'm not going to say a higher increase, but we've made a decision in concert with the Finance Committee to forestall any permanent employees until we get the Abraham's Report. I think that's what we're basically saying, and we want to go forward on that page. And then once that report is in, we have the time to vet it, as we talked about, and then we can make our decisions. Does that make sense?
I believe you're correct, Commissioner, and I know that we're not going to, I've been advised we're not going to take a vote today, but I will take any more discussion around this matter only before we continue with our agenda.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Reardon.
Dr. Childs, Madam Chair, through you to the Chair of the Commissioners and Chair of this meeting, Commissioner Shea. The whole concept of the Advisory Board working with the Commissioners in this fashion is based on our statutory authority, which limits our actions to, other than the budget, recommendations only. We don't have authority to impose a hiring freeze. We don't have the authority to vote with the Commissioners. We're merely advising the Commissioners based on our understanding of the financial situation that a hiring freeze would have been recommended. So nothing we do in that sense is binding, other than when we vote for the budget each year. The rest of it is all advisory, literally. So I want that point of clarification there because I believe that there has been misunderstandings as to the activity of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee has been very active, but within its statutory role, we have no interaction with any vote-taking or things like that on the Commissioners level. We do take votes for recommendations, but that is it, purely advisory. I just wanted to reaffirm that because there are some people who have approached me and said, you know, we assure you within the scope of your authority, well, one person in particular. And we absolutely 100% are, and not too, and it gets down to language sometimes, and with Commissioner Stady, we are not in concert with you on this particular vote. We are merely recommending this vote. So if there is a motion respectfully request or ask that that language be changed so that the word recommendation or advisory or something along those lines be used rather than something like in concert with. And I know Commissioner Stady wasn't working on the exact wording of it, but I think we would, and I think I can speak for my colleagues, I think we would want that noted, that this is in fact, I wouldn't say merely, but it is an advisory opinion or a recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Totally with you. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, last call today on this matter.
Can I just ask, can I just double check, Commissioner, from Peter, that we've done everything we need to do to correct the open meeting law alleged violation?
I have a recess.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I do believe that the actions that you've taken today in discussing the hiring freeze, the reasons for it, and the, the votes taken would effectively cure the open meeting law violation. If you, if you have any concerns about the the hiring process of June, you could send the vote to ensure that there's no, and retake that vote. But again, to ensure there's no confusion, but again, I think it would be moot at this point because it's not going to actually affect anything because it's retroactive. So I think that what has been done today so far, maybe that's the long way of saying, I think that what's been done today so far has been efficient.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, I think we're probably going to follow the advice of our lawyer. I will tell you that I'm going to ask for a two-minute recess while the director
is going to look at some records.
checks it, one, one, one record that he is trying to retrieve here to check. So we're going to stand if there's no objection in a, in a two-minute recess while we get that record. Then we'll go back on the record and then we'll conclude this.
Mr. Chair, may I, can I adjourn the Finance Committee members?
Not, not really. One, in one minute you can. We're just double checking one thing brought up.
All right.
In the interest of.
Okay.
How long has your son been on the Coast Guard?
Oh, well, he's, he's in his, he'll be starting his last year at the academy. And right now, he's been down in Portsmouth on a construction tender, which is pretty great. So yeah, he's got one more year, and then he'll be deployed, who knows where.
See, Coast Guard, he should end up somewhere in Nebraska, right?
Yeah, depends on, depends on if he ends up doing something on the Mississippi, I guess.
True.
Yeah, the big bases are Kodiak, Alaska, Seattle, Southern California, and Charleston, Portsmouth, and
Yeah, I have a friend who has a niece up in Kodiak.
Yeah. It's beautiful there. We've been there. Yeah, we've been there before. He's, he actually, we fished a lot up there, and yeah. So he's very familiar with Kodiak, actually.
I had a cousin years ago that was in the Navy up in Anchorage. She was telling us it was actually colder in New England than it was in Alaska.
It's a beautiful state. Beautiful state. I think there's a trip in my husband's in my future. He ends up in Kodiak.
We believe that these actions will cure any violations. So at this point, I will go with Attorney Summers' recommendation. And there was some, I'm just thinking, whether or not we're supposed to take two of those.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that recess. We were just checking one point. Director Ridden pointed out to me, but we're all set unless, again, on this subject, any member of the combined joint meeting wants to say anything, just on this subject. Otherwise, we're going to bid adieu to our folks at the Finance Committee. They want to stay, they're welcome to stay, but this completes this matter for today. And hopefully.
Forever.
Are you going to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, can I call for a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee?
You absolutely, you absolutely can, in my opinion.
Could I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right. Those, we'll vote that. Eric Beckerman?
Aye.
Paul Connors?
Aye.
Amy Frigiletti?
Aye.
Joe Reardon?
Aye.
And Elizabeth Childs, the Chair votes aye. So we're adjourned. Thank you very much, Finance Committee members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to continue on with the Commissioner's agenda. Again, anyone's welcome to stay. I might add that we have Treasurer Bloddy with us today at our meeting, and we welcome him. We're on number four, minutes of the open session meeting of July 21st for approval.
Mr. Chair, this is Peter Summers. Do you need me to remain on?
Yeah.
Yes, Peter.
Do you need me to remain on the meeting?
I'm sorry. Absolutely not. Thank you.
You're off the clock, Counselor.
That's what I meant by absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Peter.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval in the minutes of 7:21.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor? It is a vote. Number five, minutes of the open session meeting of July 22nd.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of minutes of July 22nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is approved. Number six, minutes of the executive session of July 21st, 2021, for approval, and do not release them at this time.
Um, I think we, I think we might.
Yeah, did we get a memo, Mr. Chairman? Didn't something, they need further review, I think.
That's July 22nd, Commissioner. I'm sorry. That's item number seven.
So I'm going to go back to number six. So.
Six is okay, and seven.
I jumped the gun. I think I jumped the gun on one, right?
All right.
So I think six is okay for approval and release. That's my understanding, Dick.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
You want to make that motion, I'll second it.
So that's okay, that one there, number six?
Yes.
All right. Okay, I'll move, move approval.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number seven, minutes of the executive session minutes of July 22nd. We have a.
We're going to table those, Dick.
Right. Motion to table. Okay, that's right. Second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor tabling the executive session minutes of July 22nd?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Number eight, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Last call, any public comment?
Not at this time.
Number nine. We have no appointments. Number 10, under all business. You do.
Sure.
Okay. No all business. Thank you. I'm sorry. We do have some old business.
Yeah.
From the View Restaurant relative to rate relief, I'm going to call on Director Cronin. We received a letter which we distributed last week from Chris Carr, our vendor at Wilson Recreation Facility relative to rate relief, dated June 30th. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Briefly, on June 30th, Mr. Carr, proprietor of Boston Butler, also known as the View Restaurant at the Quincy-Walston Golf Course, submitted a letter to you asking for a subsidy of the projected increase in the rent this July through December 2021. He goes on to express what his monthly fee is and would like the Commission to consider holding the rate with no increase for six months remaining in 2021. Last week, this matter was before you. It was asked to receive further information from Carl Minor, the superintendent of the golf course. Carl provided an email to me, which I forwarded along to each of you for your consideration. But the facts are, as I understand it, in good background, Boston Butler failed to pay rent about $2,888 from February 1st, 2020, and utilities of $1,000 from March 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. It resulted in an accumulated debt owed to the county of $41,768. It is important to point out this was in the middle of the pandemic. The current contract. The current contract was extended and signed by both parties on March 3rd, 2021. This new contract required payment of $11,031.67 by Boston Butler. While the county forgave the balance of $30,736.33. Important to point out, the Boston Butler paid this $11,000 amount to the county on March 8th. The new contract services provides for monthly rent increase of $375. From $2,125 per month to $2,500 per month effective July 1st. Boston Butler is seeking relief for the planned increase for July through December. The total amount of relief sought is $2,250. My recommendation to deny their quest based on the proximity of the contract that was signed on March 3rd. And the fact that from a COVID perspective, we are open for business. And impacts associated with the pandemic are minimal at this point, considering the rounds of golf that have been played up at Wollstone Golf Course.
Commissioners, any comments? Any suggestions?
I kind of, I, I respect obviously Director's input. I didn't get a chance to really obviously talk to him at length about this situation where I am. But I, I think I would lean towards Director Minor's recommendation, perhaps to split it and to give him one last chance to keep his business going. He's, um, he's done a good job for whatever reason, and he cited a couple of things earlier to us about getting help and getting staff. He hasn't been able to have hit it on a, perhaps on a home run yet, but I'd like to give him one more chance if we could. And perhaps if we could split it in some fashion, if that's a motion we'd need it, I'd be, I'd be pleased to make it, at least to get discussion going. Is that contrary to yours, John? I, I just want to check point of order. You're saying, don't give him any relief, and Cal said, give him halfway. Didn't he say split it, I believe?
That's right.
Did I got that right?
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. So I would say, you know, respectfully, try to help out our vendor one more time. And I would say that I'd move the suggestion of, of Director Minor as a, as a, as an attempt to help this personnel. But I think after this, the lesson has to be, we can't do anymore. This has got to be it. You know, this is it.
Getting it this year, correct?
All right, I'll, I'll second the motion for discussion.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, motion made in second. Any discussion?
Yep.
Um. I participated in this along with Mike Mullin at the beginning of pandemic and, and we. We didn't know at the beginning what we were involved, but we, we, we reflected it at the end by, by these reductions. The only thing I question is, he just signed the other contract. On March?
March 30th.
Um, in March. The summer's not over yet, or the golf season's not over yet. It goes beyond the summer. I think it's a little, I think it's a little early to, to make the final decision. However, I'm willing to work with everyone. Bear in mind, this is the last year of this contract. We extended it another year because of all that he went through and we went through and COVID. And that's fine too. So everything's coming due here at the end of this golf season. I mean, his, there isn't a winter, so to speak. I think he tries to stay open for certain occasions, but it's very difficult. So we got a lot of decisions to make this year, but. I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence. I don't disagree. Commissioner Collins.
Yeah, I can see both sides of the stick. I think, I think you made terrific points. I see Joe's side too. Maybe we're just a little bit early on this. I mean, right now the golf course is going great. And with the COVID situation maybe ramping up, you know, I can see where we might want to give him a break if it impacts. The rounds being played or, or the businesses that's before him. So I would suggest we hold off on this, maybe till the end of August, we can look at it again. Or maybe into September, look at it again, but I think it's a little bit too quick.
What happens respectfully, he would be expected to keep paying the current rent until we make a decision. Is that correct? That would, if we take no action, right?
But of course, I think we're willing to at any time and talk to him, you know, at, after September 1st or on a before. In the month of September, any way you want to word it. Again, still in the golf season, but he'll have two more months under his belt. And the numbers are going to. Be, be, he's a bit, the bill will have better numbers.
You know, I, I respect that. I was surprised when I read it, I was surprised to get, he sent, I think he sent all of us letters about staffing and things like that. And I thought it was just for information. Then I realized he was leading up to the fact that he's not able to make the money he was hoping to make. I'd be willing to withdraw my motion then. I would draw that, Mr. Chairman, and say table this matter until perhaps our, let's be careful. Let's say an agenda item in September and an appropriate time we can agree on, but sometime in September, perhaps we could take it up then. Give us a little more time. Or do you want to push it till the end of the month, October? Do we view it then, October 1?
Yeah, mid-September is fine.
Okay, all right. All right, it's fine. I'll, I'll say, Mr. Chairman, then I, I would draw my motion for action today. And the intent would be hopefully understood in the minutes reflected that we're going to table it until perhaps in the fall and sometime this time, October. Fair enough?
Excellent. That's a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion, yes, sir.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, continue this matter till the second meeting in September?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yep, thank you.
Number 11, personnel items. We have three, four at the school and one at the recreation facility. At, at the outset, I want to tell you that one of these jobs is a full-time job, but it doesn't say temporary there, but it has been explained. To the school and explained to me last week that they are down two custodial positions. They realize what we're trying to implement here and that we're waiting for some, the report plus what, everything is subject to review. So I am going to support the hiring of one custodian on a temporary basis at the school. The person is a part-time custodian now. The other three at the school, by way of explanation, are. 184-day instructor, which is in and out based on a vacancy. And the other one is the athletic director is returning. He's done the job before. He's already out, he's already an employee. And. And the last one is an address change, no impact. So I just want to emphasize the first job would be for temporary status.
Chairman, could we take, thank you, sir. Could we take up the second, third, and fourth then and go back to number one?
Sure.
Just to, I want to talk about that real quick.
That's great.
I'll, I'll move then. I would seem like the, the others are a pretty, pretty straight performer. I'll move appointment of Michael Bless of Plainville as a 184-day instructor with a rate of pay stated effective 8/30/21.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. I'll move appointment of rehire of Joseph Di Rotigliano of Bellingham as the athletic director of the race stated effective July 1, 21.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Number three.
And, and so I'll move the acceptance of the address change for Amy Flynn of Norwood effective 7/19/21.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. So on the first, yeah, on the first one, I just want to make sure, I mean, it's just a, I'm, I'm just making protocol. Have we communicated, it seems like we're going down the correct road, as we said already, temporary for now. Has this been communicated to Superintendent Martin? And also maybe probably as well, our director of maintenance and fields over there as well, his name escapes me, forgive me. But he should be, because could this person be hesitant to fill it if it's temporary, then what happens then? I'm just thinking, are we dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's?
Let me tell you that last Friday, I was received a call from Rick Fitzpatrick, the business manager.
Okay.
Told me that they're down, that, that they're shot two full-time custodians.
Oh, wow.
In conclusion, he said that. They have a temporary person or a part-time person who is this gentleman from Attleboro. Filling in at, you know, $14 an hour, whatever it is.
Okay.
They're, 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 they're two fully funded positions in the budget. I explained to him that why can't we, can we do one now and then we'll look at the other one as soon as we can? And he said they wanted to work with us, et cetera, et cetera, on the budget. And then I told him that any positions that we're, that we're doing presently are, are at a. Temporary status until such time as we completely review. The report, the Abraham report plus any other items that we're going to implement. And we gave him, I gave him the next June date and explained that the person receives all the benefits that he received otherwise, except that he would, couldn't join the pension until after the temporary status was reneged. And then you can go back and buy your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for explaining that. Thank you.
But I know that Rick is, and Rick is off this week.
No, that's good. That's good. I think just, I'd like to interject quickly before I make the motion. I really hope that on our side, Mr. McGowan gets the message to please, if he could have already prepared some replacements, even temporarily. Because again, I know he must be shot three or four, and we want our courts kept nice and clean and ready to go. So hopefully he'll be doing likewise as well, which would be great.
Okay, I'm going to go and Director Cronin for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Stady, in fact, I did speak to Mr. McGowan today and asked him to prepare the blue sheets for. The pay, for the positions that are vacated in facility maintenance, with the understanding that they would befit the same description of temporary permitting.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Hopefully we'll see you next week.
That's wonderful. That's good. Thank you, sir. I'm going to move the appointment of Stephen Tonner of Attleboro Mass as a custodian. On a rate of pay stated effective August 2nd. This appointment would be temporary as noted and discussed.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any more discussion? All in. I'm sorry.
To amend the motion, please consider the fact that it would expire no sooner than June 30th, 2021.
Okay, the temporary status would expire.
June 30th.
On June 30th of 2021.
2022.
2022.
Thank you.
All right, I'll, I'll include, I'll include that as part of my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
And just so you know, for the next one, for the Wallaston recreational facility, I'm going to stand from this vote.
Okay, Commissioner Stady, Wallaston Recreation Facility.
Yep, glad to move it. I'll move the notice for contingent employment of Michael C. Doyle of Milton. As a seasonal grounds crew employee for the rate stated, and that would be effective July 29, 21.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Two to zero. It is unanimous. Thank you. Number 13, payroll and expense warrants for approval.
That's, I do not have those, so Peter, you have to.
Number 12, yes, I've got them. Okay, so the first is, uh, warrants as of 7/28/21. 22-01 expense Aggie, $428,062.71 motion.
Do we have a second?
Second in.
All in favor? Aye, next.
Aye.
Second, 7/422 expense county in the amount of $677,122.86 motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That completes the payroll and expense warrants.
Okay.
Number 13, bid openings, we have none. Number 14, contract awards, we have done. Number 15, fiscal year 21 reserve list for approval. I'm going to call on Nancy. Nancy.
Hi.
This is a yearly occurrence. Come on in, Nancy, and briefly explain the reserve list for us.
Okay, these are, the reserve list is. The encumbrances that were from the previous fiscal year that invoices have not come in yet for or for some, some circumstances works in progress.
And we, we do this always in the month of July or August every year?
July, yes.
Right, good, okay.
Questions, Commissioners, we understand this? I was not.
Thank you. I didn't know what that, thanks for explaining that. So every year it's a normal thing. You put aside the money for bills you're waiting to pay, right?
Yes, and then, and then starting, starting this year, all, the appeals will all be closed at the end of August if the bills have been received and paid. Or the work. Is not progressing.
Right, all right.
I'm going to call Director Cronin as a comment.
Just briefly to add, Nancy did a fine job putting together the list. I went through it with her this morning. The total amount of reserves is $1.414 million. This represents potential spending in FY21 or against FY21 obligations. It is exclusive of any declared surplus associated with the Treasurer's report on their last trial balance. In other words, that surplus could be fortified by additional unspent monies from this amount. We won't know until the end of August at the earliest. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The motion would be, Mr. Chairman, for us as the Commissioners to put aside, again, it looks like the sum of $1,414,297.74. Into a reserve for future payment. That's.
Yes, but I have a question.
No, no, you're, you're good.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we need a second?
If that's your motion, Dick, I'll make the second.
Yeah, sure, thanks, yeah.
Motion made in second on the fiscal 21 reserve list. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, 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 hold on. I was making the motion. I had a follow-up question if I could.
Sure.
If I could. So this is a pretty significant amount of money. Is this typical, again, your experience, Mr. Chairman and Peter? This is a pretty huge amount. That, that champ, typical?
Commissioner Stady. Eight hundred, approximately $875,000 of it is teacher salary reserved to pay their salaries throughout the summer.
Okay, okay, okay. I didn't catch that and I should have. Okay, good, all right.
How does this compare to last year for us?
It's, it's normally about the same every year. It, it can also depend on if we have a large scale project in progress, if we carry those monies over.
In fact, this one does. It has $132,000 in for the Stone District.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, really quick, not to belabor it, but through you to Mr. Cronin, Director Cronin. Can you clarify again what you was, I, I lost what you were saying there about how does this affect our surplus? You're saying there was our, our unappropriated balance and the money, money that Deputy Treasurer Joe Doria said we had. This obviously would be lowered now with this amount. Is that what you're saying, more or less?
No, they're decoupled right now. So the, the, the trial balance numbers that have been advanced to us are unaffected by this number.
Okay.
After August, when all the obligations are met that Nancy's tracking.
Yeah.
Should spend down most of the $1.4 million, but likely, but likely not all of it.
Okay.
That amount would then be released and become complementary to the surplus that the trial balance is currently showing.
Okay, I follow you. Right. In other words, this money, if I'm wrong, this money's already been appropriated but not spent. But we're not counting it as an unappropriated balance, correct, by this action? This gets taken out of that. Is that right?
That's correct, because we're giving the county some extra time to pay the bills or address those obligations. That's right.
Yeah, all right. That's great. Thank you. I'm good.
Joe.
Commissioner Collins.
If I can go back, so with regard to payroll and expense warrants, there were two sets.
I'm sorry.
And, and I'm sorry too, I missed it. So there, there are actually three separate Treasury payroll warrants. And so I'm, I'm going to run through those, Dick, okay?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Back to number 12. Go ahead.
Back to number 12. So 22-4, two, four, parentheses, 2.1, close parentheses, Treasury payroll warrant. At the Aggie, and it's in the amount of $210,637.11 motion.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Okay, so the next one is Treasury payroll warrant number 22-4, parentheses, two, close parentheses, biweekly Aggie. And this is in the amount of $125,326.82 motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, and there's one last one. Treasury payroll warrant number 22-4. And let's see. And this is also payroll, and it's the amount of $141,325.22 motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'm sorry about that. I just.
That's, that's fine. Yeah, it's okay.
Do we need to vote to reserve, Mr. Chairman? I had made the motion, it was seconded.
Now, on 15, the Reserve, Fiscal 21 Reserve List has approval. Nancy has explained it. Motion been made in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote.
Okay.
Number 16, I'm going to call an Assistant Director Buckley about a memorandum of understanding with. with the City of Quincy, the City of Waymouth, and the Town of Randolph Police Departments regarding the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. Director Buckley.
Mr. Three, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is a recurring, yearly, this time of year, activity that the Commissioners do. Just a quick background, Edward Byrne was a New York City police officer, was 22 years old, and murdered around 3:30 in the morning on February 26, 1988. And the Bureau of Justice Assistance has named this federal justice grant, which focuses principally on outfitting police officers with protective equipment to enhance their safety, technology, and training. For many years, Norfolk County has been included. It's, we are included not because we are a, we are a beneficiary of the funds of this grant, but because we are the overarching region and just how the grant is structured nationwide. So Randolph is set to receive $13,704, Quincy $32,331, and Waymouth $13,923. And this is, this amount is tied to a metric surrounding high and violent crime. Often Quincy and Waymouth are party to this grant this year. Randolph is qualified as well. The need for a memorandum of understanding is that the grant requires us all to apply together. And past practice has been that one of the three police departments will take the lead, do, do the application, and we will sign the memorandum of understanding, which is before you, the, the single page. We had some very good discussions with Sergeant Horton in the Quincy Police Department, as well as Officer Howe in the Waymouth Police Department surrounding this grant. And we also did a little digging and research as well, talked to some of our other counties, specifically Frank Basler, the director in Plymouth. Plymouth does the administration for their Byrne grants for Brockton, and I believe there are a couple of other communities within them. So while we're going to continue the status quo, which is why the memorandum of understanding is before you, we're also using this as an opportunity for dialogue that next year perhaps the county could do the administration for the communities to take a little bit of that administrative burden off of the local police departments. But right now, it's, we're doing, we're approaching it as we had in the past, but it just needs a simple authorization from the Commissioners to have the chair sign the memorandum of understanding with the other three police departments in Norfolk County. Have you taken any questions?
Any questions of Assistant Director Buckley about the Edmund, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Commissioner.
Through you to Mr. Buckley. Thank you, Bill, for your explanation. I did have, I was curious as to what it was. My normal question then would be, again, looking to expand our regionalization, which is one of our five goals, you know, on the Abraham Report. Could this be something that is offered to other local police departments, you know, in the surrounding, in Norfolk County? Could others participate? And if we did that, what effect would it have on the amount that each town would get? So is that something we want to look at, like to expand it and promote it? Since we are participating in it, we're on it with those towns, which is great. Should we look to other towns, other police departments?
I, I may defer to the director who has a little bit more of a law enforcement background than I, but it's my understanding that these towns were specifically allocated the federal funds from the metrics that they use. So I believe you, you trigger eligibility to, to the crime rate within your community.
Right.
So it's not so much that we can, you're, you're identified as eligible not by application, but by the sort of your, your caseload. So that we, every year, it would be a different, ideally, perhaps no community in Norfolk County would qualify because the crime rate is so low.
How about this, if I could, I'd like to make this a motion or at least a suggestion for us, for us Commissioners. How about if we send out a letter to each town in Norfolk County, to the local administrators and chief of police, and let them know about this award, that we're very proud to sign and support, which I think is a good thing? And then, based upon some, just maybe a further study from our Director Cronin, maybe put into language that would say more or less the effect that perhaps your community may have managed to apply based on standards, but we're open to working with you. I think it'd be a great thing. I think it'd be a great thing. I'm not saying we can help each town, but again, the more we can tell our towns, we're looking to partner up, I think the better off we are. My suggestion. That's all, please.
On that being, I'm going to call Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Stady, excellent, excellent question. And I believe Assistant Director Buckley was accurate with his response. If I may help with amending your motion, preferentially, I'd like to contact the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to determine what rubric was used to, to validate what Bill was saying on whether or not additional county, cities, and towns may be eligible. Furthermore, I am aware, having worked up there over 20 years ago, there are, there are multiple grants available to law enforcement through the Executive Office of Public Safety, as well as first responders, fires, and so forth. It may be worth corresponding with them first to find out where the county can assist cities and towns in regionalized law enforcement solutions. And then, if there is a path towards future grant opportunities, then we send letters to the cities and towns asking to engage in assistant application. If I may, I believe you made a motion, I would suggest the letter then, or correspond, start with EOPS and then go to the cities and towns. That makes sense.
Excellent. I'll, I'll, again, I'll amend or tailor the motion for the sense to allow our director to explore these options and to investigate these options, and then perhaps in a timely manner, again, a letter could come out from the whole board, the Commissioners, to the respective towns, and I think that's, that's right on. That's fine.
Okay, I'll, I'll second the motion as amended.
Okay, all in favor of Commissioner Stady's motion and relative to a memorandum of understanding with Quincy, Waymouth, and Randolph relative to the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll further pursue this and send that letter after we get more information.
Thank you.
We're going to now go to number 18, and then to, I'm sorry, number 17, Veteran Service Agent Program Status Update. Director Cronin.
So, Mr. Chairman, regretfully to inform you that the Veteran Service Agent Program in Norfolk County will be mothballed. Avon has opted out of the program, as we know Franklin has. We will be proceeding to, bid it due to Dale, who's retiring at the end of August. We will work with his assistant, the Town of Franklin, to ensure a smooth transition. The, the program, in my opinion, will be mothballed in the event that the service shows another opportunity of need within the county, we can resurrect it. But at this time, there does not appear to be any interested communities to join this program.
Okay, any questions about this? In other words, we could reach back if we needed it.
Yes.
And the top, member towns that ask for, contribute to the
Program.
The program financially.
That's right.
So we don't, we're not, we're not, I guess mothball is a good term.
Yeah, Dale.
Allow us to reach back and get it if necessary.
This Commission will get a chance to meet with Dale again before he leaves, but I have to tip my hat. He has created an opportunity that's very unique in Norfolk County and has managed a program to the benefit of veterans in Norfolk County. It's hard to imagine the program in the same image and likeness without somebody like Dale at the helm. So we'll require somebody with his dedication and creativity to pull it off, but at this point, without the interest of other communities, there's, there's just no market for it. So that's, that's pretty much the status of things. But Dale will give us.
I, I look, I look with, I, I look with, I think with sadness with this event. I know it's no one's fault, because Dale himself, the person, did a terrific job, and we have to separate the person from the position. But I look at even in my own town, when we had no one there, and Dale stepped in and serviced so many veterans. And so, of course, I'm wondering right now, what happens to a town in our county when there is no agent? Who's going to take care of those veterans and their families? I mean, to me, I, I just think this is something we don't want to mothball too long, and we really should try to find a way to get this going again as soon as possible. But I understand the action, I do, but I, I, I really feel like this should be given a priority to see if we can do something, even if it's a part-time person that we have available to assist our towns in some way. Because Dale did a great job in Canton. Everywhere he goes, he's held in high regard, and surely he's going to be missed. And I see Eric is ready to jump in there, so.
I'm going to call on Eric.
Yes, I am.
Eric, which hand do we have today? Selectmen, Beckerman now?
Yeah, at this point, I, I'd be part of the select, but I wanted just, you know, I, I didn't know Dale was going to be on this call, but I did want to say that I wanted to extend a thank you from myself and from the community. I know he's done a great job in here in Avon, and we're sad to see him go, but I wish him all the best. And I know he's talked about still assisting us and trying to find somebody new, and, and we highly appreciate that. But I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that Dale has done a great job. He, he helped us get our Purple Heart designation last year for the first time, and we're just about to have our second ceremony, and he was a big key to that. So I just personally want to thank him for all of his help for our town.
Okay, thank you. We are going to have Eric in for a little, some kind words in.
Yeah, yeah.
Dale, you are Eric. Okay, and we're going to have Dale in, in August before he leaves.
Okay. Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, this concludes the matter of Veteran Service Update. Number 18, Report of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this is Dale. I hit the wrong button. I, I was able to join, so my head's a little bit right now. I don't know if I can get out of my office, but I agree with John. It's a tough call, but putting this in a mothball at this time is the right decision. And we'll see where we go, and I do look forward to getting back into the dead of soon to be able to chat with, with all of you, and, and also with Eric over in Avon, and see if there are things we can do there to, to keep the program going somehow as well.
Okay, thank you, Dale.
Thanks, Dale.
Always good to hear from Dale.
Yeah. American Rescue Plan?
Number 18.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, the American Rescue Plan Act status for Norfolk County entails a fair, fair amount of upcoming activity. I can confirm that last Thursday, July 22nd, the county received its deposit of over $68 million into its bank. My thanks to Treasurer Lottie and Assistant Treasurer Joe Daria, who coordinated the application on behalf of Norfolk County and oversaw the deposit of those funds into the bank. Moving forward, I have under my update under the report a schedule of events that are coming up for this commission in August. But relative to the American Rescue Plan Act, some important ones are coming in. On August 3rd, we're projecting a virtual meeting between the Commissioners and four various firms, CPA firms that are interested in working with Norfolk County to develop a program to administer the grants to the cities and towns. We were budgeting, budgeting, we're allotting 30 minutes per vendor. That includes questions and answers. The commission can take the results of that somewhat two-hour meeting under advisement and elect a vote either that day or at a subsequent meeting. You'll listen and learn a lot about what these firms are presenting. They were given a very brief email containing the rubric of what we're looking for. I'll provide this commission with a similar one-page update on what the ARPA program needs to be relative to Norfolk County needs going forward. On August 5th, relative to the ARPA grant, this commission is scheduled to meet, tri-board meeting with Bristol and Plymouth County at the Agricultural School to discuss further the possible coordination of the grant among the three counties. Last week during our weekly call, Treasurer Brian informed me that he had had a call with Barnstable County, who suddenly interested in, perhaps, in joining Plymouth County in his program. I hope to learn more about that this week.
Oh, wow.
August 23rd, a very important meeting is going to occur, and that is a virtual meeting with the Norfolk County stakeholders. You may remember after your vote on July 7th that we prepared a letter to the cities and towns informing them our goal was to meet with them within a month and explain to them our, our expectations of grant management, program management, and hear their questions. While I don't presume we'll have answers to all the questions, it's important we open a dialogue with our customers and explain to them what we know. That particular virtual meeting will include the Advisory Board, Select Board members, and of course, town managers and town administrators of each of the Norfolk County communities. A week later, to cap off the busy month of August that you will have, you'll be doing the same thing, but primarily on the financial matters with the Finance Committee on August 30. So ARPA will be front and center in the month of August, as it should be, but trending very well for the county with the deposit of funds. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any questions about APRA, Commissioners?
We have a time set. Do you have a time for that August 23rd meeting, Mr. Chairman, or John? August 23rd?
I do, I'm targeting 1 to 3 p.m., Commissioner Stady.
1 to 3, okay, thank you.
Yep, for the record, I'm targeting 1 to 2 p.m. for April, August 30th.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Number 19, Report of the County Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comments will fall into six categories I'll be brief. On the financial side, I wanted to alert the commission that last Thursday, I held a meeting with our county treasurer, our Hillside Securities Advisor, as well as Mr. Rick Fitzpatrick and the new superintendent, John Martin. And in that conversation, we were exploring options to potentially look at the county's surplus in FY21 in ways it can be used to offset the operating cost of the debt on the school budget. We went through a couple of different models. It's a fairly complex exercise, but the, the gist is, we need the county's audit to be in final draft or final submitted to the county by the end of August. That will help the bond rating agencies understand our position to get what's called a short-term bond anticipatory note for the latest level of debt that the school is taking on. That will position the county to perhaps look at buying that debt outright this spring. Hillside is going to work up a model where we can assess the amount of money that we could potentially put towards the debt and the impact it will have on the operating budget. So we don't have those numbers yet. They're going to prepare those for us in the upcoming meeting. Very productive meeting. Next, I've had very, very preliminary conversations with Dr. Childs and Chairman Riordan regarding the county's FY21 surplus. Suffice to say, as I just mentioned, I can envision a large surplus piece going to the schools, a large surplus piece going to our stabilization, as well as our capital needs for FY23. Our reserve list, I think I mentioned to you earlier, showed a relatively strong close for FY21. We'll examine, back to Commissioner Stady's question, what amount will actually revert to something what we would commonly call free cash at the end of August? We'll keep an eye on it. The $68.6 million, as I mentioned earlier, has hit the Eastern Bank account for the county for ARPA. And finally, on the financial piece, Mr. Phil Iantoska, who's not here today, he's on vacation. I've asked him to begin tracking the unappropriated supplemental needs of the county that will be coming forth to the advisory board in September. The list is not expansive, but it's important. It does include several technology items, as well as minor transfers. Regarding technology, our IT Director Mark McDonald has submitted a draft technology plan to me. I got it this morning. It appears to tackle many of the elements that I've asked him to look at since I arrived to increase the performance and ruggedness of how we compute. That's our server, our backend, as well as our frontend and our software needs. So I'll be talking, Mark, about finalizing that list and bringing those details before you in an upcoming meeting, and certainly before the Advisory Board meeting in September. On the facility side, the Stone District Court HVAC Improvement Project had a group meeting last week between the mechanical engineer, the contractor, and the structural engineer. There was a fair amount of dialogue concerning the root cause. As a result of the meeting, this office is conducting a further review of its next steps. It's a complicated process as it involves public procurement laws and the need to perhaps rebid the project. I'll report back to the commission once we finish our due diligence on that matter. Just a reminder, I've submitted to each of you a schedule for August. I believe I just mentioned most of the elements as they affect you regarding ARPA, but there were a couple of other items in there relative to vacations. I know Commissioners Shea will be out of the country from August 16th through the 20th. And we also are looking at a tri-board meeting, which I believe I did mention. So you will be fairly busy. You will be fairly busy, I think this commission's gonna have to make a decision on whether or not it meets the week of August sixteenth through the twentieth, that's your consideration, uh, with Chairman Shea out of the country.
Peter can hear.
Uh, excuse me. Um, my weekly meetings, upon entry, I had weekly meetings with department heads and senior staff to come up to speed on both internal and external factors affecting the operations in Norfolk County. I believe now I have a full understanding of the status of things, those weekly meetings will now revert to monthly meetings, um, beginning in August. Uh, finally, the Abrahams' report, um, consumes a lot of our time these days, he has been very, very active with us, both here at the county commissioner's office, as well as the department heads. Last week, I sent out a memo to department heads, asking them to make themselves available this week for Mark to interview them and review the draft unit, um, summaries that he's prepared for them, that is ongoing. Mark gave me a list of to-do, um, list items before he meets with us on August eleventh. It's relatively manageable, there are some pieces in here that he's waiting for, um, comments and feedback on. Um, I suspect he'll get that well before August eleventh, but it's a manageable list of, uh, of items, um. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I believe that completes my report for this week, I've been answering questions.
Thank you, any questions to Director Cronin?
Thanks, John. Thank you.
Bye, uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, nice job, John, keep up the good work, you're, you're on top of everything the way we like, um. I would be open next week, perhaps, to talking about, um, the meeting of the commissioners formally, uh, Mr. Chairman, only the fact is that, you know, uh, we are not one to shun work, we all know that by now, we're all, we all enjoy our job, but we're gonna have a very, very busy August, the first two weeks. The director has crammed us with all sorts of meetings in terms of other things that go on with that job. It would not be the worst thing to allow him, truthfully, a break to catch up on things he needs to do, and perhaps scale back our meeting, or maybe not meet that, that week that you're away. I'll, we're open for discussion, no decision today, but I'm looking at him in terms of what he's cranking out, and Billy, and I think sometimes they need a little break as well, so I'm, I'm open for that. Uh, certainly, we could, we could scale back the agenda or do something else, but, uh, it's not a bad idea, and I told you, I, I, I said this before, many other government institutions in the county meet, eh, you know, twice a month in the summer, and even we found out, the Plymouth Board doesn't meet now again until September, they, you know, so, we are hardworking, there's no question. We are doing a fine job led by you, Mr. Chairman, but just throwing it out there.
I'm, I'm willing to take that out of consideration, but we, we need to decide next week, so we can let people know if they need to get things in there. Um, I don't think it would hurt, however, I'm, I'm, I know you can carry on, I'm, uh, out of the country. Commissioner, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, to Commissioner Stady's remark, I, we, he and I did have a conversation about that week you're, um, out of the country, um, I will likely use that time to prepare the PowerPoint, um, presentation for the large-scale group meeting on August twenty-third. Um, you know, it'll be a rather comprehensive meeting, so I wanna make sure I have the, uh, the time and resources to get that done.
Okay, why don't we do this, why we, um, I, I, I think, I think you're open to missing a week unless we need to, need to meet, Dick, I'm open to it. Uh, Joe, Joe's unavailable, um, can we vote on that now, or do you want us to vote on that next week?
Next week would be best.
Alright, so we'll vote on it next week, and the way we can leave it, Dick, is in case there's a need for an emergency meeting, uh, we, we can have an emergency meeting if, if something comes up the last minute.
Right, we have to work on the, the details associated.
Sure.
We, we're remote, we can always do that, it's not like it's, it's impossible to do, but I, I was thinking more for the, the team. Maybe the team needs a little chance to ca- take a breath and catch up, that's all. But I'll be here next week, and we'll, uh, we can kick that around, it's just a food for thought, that's all. Get ready for August, this is gonna be, gonna be a busy month, Mr. Chairman, Peter, we're gonna be very busy, looking good though, looking forward to it.
Number twenty, any other items we did not anticipate?
Um, one thing I'll.
Yes, Commissioner.
One thing I'll talk about, Fitz, real quick, um, COVID's starting to spike back up, and so, I'm not quite sure how that's gonna affect things, I know a bunch of counties, Bristol, um, Bristol's under a watch, I, I, um, Barnstable's under a watch. Nantucket, Middlesex too, so, uh, it's possibly, we may have to go back to, uh, all remote again, Dick, it might have to happen again soon, I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. Um, if I may, Mr. Chairman, an employee approached me this morning, asking questions about that very issue, and I, I responded that we'll, we will likely follow guidelines as they, um, come forth from the state on, relative to, um, social distancing rules, mask wearing, remote, and so forth, but, uh, I think we all know the drill, we have the resources to carry it forward if we need to, CARES Act is still in play. We'll, we'll certainly follow whatever guidance you folks like to take, if it, if it comes to pass.
That's what we did in the past, we followed the state guidelines in the past, so.
Right, right. Yeah, good heads up, Peter, Peter, we, I know, there's a lot of concern down here in, uh, in Provincetown and other towns, and, uh, there's a concern, it's on the rise, there's a, that variant is not to be messed with, so hopefully we'll, we'll dodge a bullet. Mr. Chairman, if I may, a question, Director Cronin mentioned that Barnstable County had reached out to Plymouth County. Would it make sense perhaps to extend an invite to Barnstable to participate in our meeting? If they wanna just join in and, you know, kick around some ideas, would that be a, a bad thing? See if they wanna.
Commissioner Stady, if I could, so the, my remarks to you were based on a call with, um, Treasurer O'Brien, I did not get a, a full understanding of how serious the conversation was, and how serious Barnstable is. I expect to have a follow-up conversation next, no, actually tomorrow at two o'clock, and I can certainly ask him if he believes that Barnstable is far enough along the way where they might wanna join us, they're more than welcome to. I know, uh, Assistant Director Buckley has, uh, struggled mightily with the idea of what to order for food, so we haven't yet placed that order. Um, I'll know as early as tomorrow if Barnstable will be joining us, or can be joining us, and if they do, we'll, we'll change the food order and, and the agenda accordingly.
Was, absolutely, very good. Now, they do some neat things, different things down there, and, uh, as you know, Mr. Chairman, I think it might be good, uh, if we, they wanna give us their insight too, and it's always good to pick up ideas, you know, so, alright. That's all I had for now.
Last call. I want a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, see you next week.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, Dick.
Thank you.
I hope they get sunny for you down there.
Yeah, it was, it been a good week.